Hey everybody, welcome back to my channel. Wow does it echo in here. I'm at the Brownstown Borough Council Borough Building. They're about to start the meeting here in about two minutes, so let's go. Alright, if you like what you see, leave a comment, and if you don't like what you see, leave a comment, and please subscribe. Back to going to meetings.
It's nice and toasty in here today.
Did you enjoy the concert?
I sure did. If you ever see me at a concert, I'm enjoying it.
Yeah, it was a good one.
That's what I do for fun. That's my happy place. My dad was a little cranky, but what can you do?
My dad was there. He wasn't cranky then.
I don't know why he was. We're in the front.
Yeah, that was awesome.
I scored them like the week before. It was...
Oh, did you?
I just looked, and my mom said, "Hey, Chicago's playing." I'm like, "Does anyone else see Chicago?" Two front row tickets, and they were cheap.
Can't beat that.
No.
John, how'd you do on the election?
Um, came in fifth place.
How many votes did you get?
Eleven percent, two-hundred-and-fifty-some. But, I am the happiest last-place horse to ever come in. Start your meeting and I'll tell you.
Here. John Bala, Brian Fora, Shannon, Kristi Dicker, Michael Guyer, Jess Young. Here.
You want to give your report?
Yeah, so the chief's report was given to me. There was a total of three-hundred-and-fifty-one reports of service by the West Hills Regional Police Department for the month of October. To date, the total was three-thousand-six-hundred-and-six. For Brownstown, we handled thirteen in the month of October, and we had a yearly total to date for Brownstown of one-sixty-five. No traffic citations, ten for the year, and eight warnings. One other thing to pass along and note, the West Hills Regional Police Department participated in a drop location for the National Drug Takeback Day on the twenty-fifth of October, where we did gather twenty-six-point-five pounds of unused or unwanted medications that were received and destroyed by the Drug Enforcement Agency. There was also one criminal mischief complaint in the borough for the month of October.
I did notice you guys, and I see you guys were involved, we're going down the stairs, so you guys have some hayrides and everything going on for Halloween, huh?
Unfortunately, there was a crew of us that were on fire in the city. So, but we had some people back there that were...
Yeah, I see like three or four hayrides coming through one right into the other. I guess up the others, my truck was involved.
Yeah, and on the...
I didn't see all that activity in that.
We had no major incidents during the trick-or-treat night either, so yeah, everything went off without a hitch.
Okay. Of the incidents in Brownstown, was there anything serious with the public?
Criminal mischief, and I believe it was the one I took. I don't have the details on it, other than I do remember being at one where there was an attempted break-in of a garage on the upper side.
No trends or anything like that, just...
No, we were crossing fingers because it seemed to be someone maybe, or that same group that was entering vehicles previously, but that was an isolated incident, so...
Okay. Everybody didn't know, the West Hills just started yesterday?
Uh, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday morning.
Taking on Upper Yoder too, on a purchase of service for the next two months, and then on the first of January, we become a full-flagged member of West Hills Regional, so... Okay, thanks John. Anybody out there got any questions for... Or, sorry, okay, we'll move on. Go ahead, Kevin.
Our file report submitted for the month of October. The only thing I have to add is, we do have our appreciation dinner again, annual one, which will be Saturday, February twenty-first. We're still in the process of getting that location finalized. And also, we did get another inventory of smoke detectors from the Red Cross, so we will be... We're able to go out and provide those again through the Red Cross. So I know we just did one on North Street yesterday, so I encourage people to take advantage of that program. That's all I have.
Okay. Everybody got any questions for us on it? If not, yes, you want to introduce, Ellen?
Yeah, we have Mark Lazary right here.
Lazar.
Lazar, sorry. Here from the Planning Commission. He's gonna talk about the West Hills Comprehensive Plan. He's gonna give us a note, and we guys are not being able to ask questions, is that any?
Yeah, I think I have enough for everyone here, but you know, I'm just... It's just a handout presentation, so I'm not gonna go over everything. I just want everyone to have something in hand, and apologize, the third time you'll hear this.
Don't worry about it, man.
No, the third time you'll hear this, uh, this little discussion with council.
Actually, I'll let you do your thing, try and stand my camera, I won't ask him a question.
We need any more, I have a lot. Okay. I was just... Just give me a question. As Jessica introduced, my name is Mark Lazar. I am the Executive Director of the Cameron County Planning Commission. So everyone knows, I'm a resident of the West Hills Region. I live in Southmont, right behind Clark's Corner store, and close to that elementary school, so I'm kind of local with everyone here as well. The purpose of our presentations, I don't have a long discussion. This is more to introduce myself, make sure everyone knows who I am. If there are any lingering questions amongst council, we wanted to give the courtesy of coming before you at least once, and perhaps multiple times if we're invited back, just to give it... If there's any questions, or any just concerns, you just wanna know anything, I'd like to hear that, and we can talk about that briefly. I don't wanna take too much of your time here, that's fine. You tell me to go into more detail on something, you interrupt me, that's fine, guys. But yeah, the handout here, this is kind of a standard presentation. I'm not gonna go through every page, but I wanted you to have this in case, again, as I leave here, you kinda have the information, so you say, "Hey, I didn't know about this, I didn't understand that," you kinda have it in front of you, you can ask any questions. But, as you're aware, multi-municipal comprehensive plan, we're working with five municipalities in the West Hills Region. Upper Yoder, Southmont, Westmont, Lower Yoder, and Brownstown make up the five. I think we're probably all familiar with the region and where we're at, but the first page here would show a nice little map, if there's any question on that as well. So we don't really need to go through that, but in terms of the comprehensive plan, I mean, we've been relying on Brian and Jessica to kinda be the liaison between the planning team, if you will, and the council here, so we trust that Jessica's reporting back and kinda giving updated information for everyone on that. I just wanted to cover a couple things to get out in front of, you know, kinda the approach and the format and the expectation. I just want everyone to understand the project objectives, so when we're thinking about what the plan is, kinda the final product, I want you to be thinking of really three major topics, you know? Developing a vision for the West Hills Region as a whole, but also respecting the vision of that that you have and residents have for Brownstown itself. Where do you see Brownstown going in the next five to ten years? What kind of community do you see? What would you like to have? Not really like to have, but how do you project, and how do you see, and how do you feel about the borough moving forward? And how that fits into the whole West Hills Region as well? Because we're both, remember, we're kinda both planning on a regional level and on a local municipal level as well. Top priorities, so I think it's important to note, the approach for the plan, it's not, you know, it's not, "Let's identify every last little thing that could possibly be done everywhere for everything." You know, that, you do planning like that, as you all know, right? You work at your house on the weekend, if you say, "Hey, I'm gonna accomplish a hundred things this weekend," you end up probably doing none of them because you're trying to do a hundred different things, right? So the approach is, what are the top priorities in the West Hills Region collectively, and perhaps for Brown... Oh, not perhaps, but for Brownstown as well? Recreation, economic development, community growth, communications, things along those lines. So be thinking about, you know, top three to five priorities. You know, if we can accomplish five things in the next couple of years, what would those things be? Be thinking along those lines. And then action strategies, again, it's, you know, I don't wanna get too casual, but as they say, if you just talk about and wish for things without having some concrete steps, you know, how are we going to accomplish this? How do we go from where we're at to where we wanna be? What are things that are realistic? Keep them realistic, feasible, and achievable? Right? I mean, it's important to dream big and to think big, but we all have to be grounded in the realities of, every municipality has their functioning, they have their tax base, they have their budgets, they have, you know, how they operate. So, our job is to kind of take you from point A to point B within those, within that framework. So, be thinking about action strategies, how are we gonna accomplish this? How are we gonna accomplish the goal? Maybe taking a step back, but again, I'm the Director of the Planning Commission. This main project is being, I guess, conducted or led by the Cameron County Planning Commission. I say, we were working for and with each of the municipalities, so it's kind of a dual, it's our plan, it's your plan. I live here, so it's my plan as well. I kinda think about it that way as well, it's your plan as well. But that's kind of the breakdown, you know, public, elected bodies, the local planning commissions. We do have a project steering committee, each, Brian and Jessica serve on that steering committee, I believe Kevin does as well, representing kind of municipal emergency services across the region as well. Our steering committee has about, you know, thirty, thirty-some people on it. They weren't, just so everyone's clear, we didn't go into a room and say, "Hey, who would we like to have? Who's our buddies? Who do we think would be a bunch of guest people just for us?" And put them on there. We went through a stakeholder analysis, so we thought about what kind of categories or types of topics can we have people represent, you know? From youth, you know, if we wanna talk a category of youth, who should we have in the area that can be an expert or discuss youth activities and information?
You don't wanna put your oldest first, how you're gonna put your youth...
Yeah, and you know, that's a good point. So we've had, we have a good relationship with the Westmont School District. We've presented to classes there on the plan. We have three students from Westmont who are now serving on the steering committee that kinda give us that younger perspective on things, we're trying to balance that out as well. And as you're aware, I don't think it's a secret, the next steering committee meeting, which will be steering committee meeting number two, will be here on the twentieth. And I think you guys are aware of that, or if you're not, I apologize, you should be aware of that. And, you know, that's not... Choose my words carefully, we're not restricting access to anyone, believe me now, but it's, the steering committee has said that meeting is the meeting of the steering committee, so, you know, I would invite every member of council. I would expect, maybe that's a strong word, but expect for you to be here as well, even though you're not maybe officially on the steering committee, it would be appropriate to have every member on council here at that steering committee meeting. It's your, as an elected official, it's your ability to come to that meeting. So, if that wasn't clear to everyone, I would hope to see everyone here for that meeting as well. You know, we give a slide on the consultant team, just, you know, you can look at that at your leisure, but again, with the planning commission, we do have a consultant on board and his team, so you can look at that as you go through. Plan structure, I don't wanna spend too much time on this, but again, thinking about vision, goals, strategies, and how do we get from point A to point B in a realistic, achievable manner? That's the best way that I can describe it as well. I use, I choose the analogy sometimes, I don't think it's too corny, but sometimes if I'm talking within a group of people and they're kinda looking at me like, "What do you..." Like, "I don't know what plant planning is, I don't really know what you're doing." I would say, show of hands, how many people have ever remodeled their house, or worked on their house? I think everybody probably has. So I say, so, you know, the first thing that you do is you just drive by the H Hardware and grab the first can of paint you see, and go home and start painting away, and no one does that, right? You kinda think about what you wanna do. "I wanna paint this room, I wanna paint that," so you're kinda thinking along those terms. You're planning out what you wanna do. Are we gonna do the furniture? Are we gonna replace the floor? You know, all that kinda stuff. So if you think along those terms, planning is the same sort of way. You know, you're here, you wanna get, you wanna go here, there's steps along the way that you wanna go through. So you, a well-thought-out manner of what we're doing. I wanted to address something else along the line. Again, since we're working with five municipalities, there's obviously a balance between the collective whole of the region and each municipality, so we're working hard to balance that out, to have everyone's voice heard in the matter. You probably heard some things, or maybe read in the paper, kind of a focus on shared services. We, we're not gonna take credit for Upper Yoder, you know, the police coming together, but that type of concept, you know, was well-thought-out, you know? Not using the C-word there, but shared services together, there's ways to work together with neighboring areas for the benefit of all, so I'll just...
I'm assuming that projects involving collective impact in the five communities would have a greater priority than an individual project that pertains only to one of the municipalities that you're at.
Yeah, that's a real, that's a smart question, and I wanna think about that and answer that correctly, so... I wanna caution everyone, and when we say, "The outcomes of this plan," yeah, we would normally think a project, like a thing to be done, you know, like your community park that's being done here, that's a project. But I just wanna throw this out to everyone, not every recommendation or action is of a project category. We've actually been talking a lot, it came up this morning in a little get-together, it came up before, just this concept of communication, and how municipalities communicate information to residents and amongst themselves. Council to council is, and different organization and groups seems to be a topic that's gaining momentum. Now, that's a project that doesn't have a dollar tag to it. So just, when we're talking about outcomes and action strategies, just don't always assume that it's going to be, it has to be a physical project with dollars and sense behind it. Sometimes it can be, you know, non-structural items, it can be just collaboration and working together. I don't know if I answered, probably didn't answer your question correctly, I kinda worked around it there.
Well, I was actually thinking, you mentioned the police department, consolidation with Upper Yoder. We have five, we have, in these five communities, we have four different fire departments. Is that a potential project, trying to work to consolidate?
I'll be as honest as I can with you. This is not a hidden agenda of mine, or anyone else's municipality that say, "Hey, let's just call this a comprehensive plan, but what we really wanna do is try to figure out a way to mesh or consolidate on these." That's not a, that's not hidden agenda of ours at all. I think what our goal is, in those discussions, if momentum goes towards, you know, the different organizations looking together and saying, "Hey, you know what? This is an opportunity," maybe that's an implementation item, but I really don't wanna say that that's something that we're specifically looking at or studying right now. I don't know what side, because I'm a little bit, not caught off guard, but I don't know what side on the, if you want me, I don't know if you're looking at me and saying, "You want it to be that way or not being that way." I'm trying to read your language and see...
If you try, you're grabbing the tiger by the tail, I can tell you that.
Yeah, that's why, because I think we've been asked that type of question in other presentation, and I just wanna be clear, that's not really a hidden agenda or a secret agenda of all this to look to do that. You know, call me a, you can call me a liar, but if momentum goes and municipalities talk together, you know, maybe that momentum will go that way, but that's not certainly something that I'm outwardly pushing, so, if you're...
It was just a hypothetical example.
Yeah, I should've asked you, which, what's the best way for me to answer to be safe?
Yeah, we've already talked here, but I mean...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe another way to look at it, you know, we talk about this concept, you know, recreation seems to be something that we're hearing a lot about on, just from other input that we got from the steering committee meeting. Now, a priority in the region may be to improve recreation. Well, that can be done six different ways, right? That's, that could be a large collective, large impact project that everyone could benefit from, but it also could be, you know, when we did the field tour, we toured the Brownstown, I wanna get the name correct, the...
The Rec Park.
The Rec Park, you know, and there's a lot of opportunity and potential there, so maybe momentum goes towards it, that's, that could be a large impact project as well for the whole region, but certainly servicing the residents of Brownstown, one-hundred percent on that, yeah. Yeah. Just where we're at, we're at in the planning process, I mean, nothing gets done overnight, you know? Trying to get this completed as quickly as possible, but not so fast that it seems like we're just kinda skipping some steps, so. There's really five phases to the project. We're kinda a little bit, a little bit to the left of the halfway point. We're in between like the excite and listen phase, so. The public meeting, the steering committee meetings, we're gonna have a community survey that's coming out here in the next, you know, next couple of months here to get some more input. We've gotten input from the school and youth there, so we're kinda in the process of listening and hearing and kinda everyone's vision and what we can do with that information, so. That's kinda where we're at, we're at in the process. So we're certainly not at the point where decisions haven't been made and things have been kinda, kind of put together, recommendations are directed, we're not at that, we're not at that point yet, so. Really, that kinda covers what I wanted to go over. I did wanna express, when we were in Southmont a week or two ago, council wanted me to address like ways that their council can have input on the process, so I just wanna make sure everyone understands, there's, you know, we did have one public meeting, there's gonna be a second, you know, there's gonna be additional public meetings, there's gonna be other input opportunities. Our discussion here tonight, and maybe future discussions that we have here, the community survey coming out, input on the steering committee as well. So there's opportunities to provide input. As the plan is being developed, you know, when we get to the point of preparing a draft plan, it will be as transparent as possible, you know, Jessica can report back to what we're doing. If you come to us and say, "Hey, before you even get to that draft, can you just kinda come and present again and kinda give us an idea of what we should expect?" That's fine, we can do that. But I want you to understand, when the plan is prepared, it will go through a public review process, a forty-five-day public review process. Council will have an opportunity to review, make amendments, revisions, changes. Ultimately, ultimately, there'll be a final public hearing, I'm not sure if there'll be one collectively or one in each municipality, but prior to council adopting the plan via resolution, there'll be multiple steps of review and evaluation, so it is not going to be, the next time you see me, I'm telling you what your plan is, that's not how this is gonna work, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, are there any specific questions or concerns or thoughts that you had that you want me to address, or just should know about? Again, this is a courtesy, you can call me up anytime, if they say, "Hey, come back again," I'm just two minutes down the road, so I can be anytime you want. I'll just leave it with this, and then I'll sit down. Again, when we're thinking about planning, just don't always look and say, I've had this con, every plan that I've worked on, council people have said the same thing, and I'm surprised I didn't hear, but it's like, when we talk to residents, when we get input, how do we manage expectations or wants by residents with the reality of what we can do, right? So that's why I'm a big believer in, you know, what's feasible and what's realistic and what's achievable, I wanna stress that, so. It will, we really won't come here and say, "Hey, look, the first thing that you guys need to do is come up with some funds or resources that you don't, that you don't have." That's not realistic or achievable, so we'll work with you, we kinda understand everyone's situation there, so. Again, just, you know, we'll be as fair as we can and transparent, and any input that you can provide us is great, and we hope to see you all, you know, next week, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. Yeah, I do. I just wanted to make, I'm going around to all the municipalities that the West Hills Regional Police covers, warning them about Officer Ian Osowski. Not a good officer. He doesn't understand what constitutional protections are. Violated my First Amendment rights. There's an incident that I'm aware of, where he kicked in a guy's door over a noise complaint. We don't need, you know, now that whole department's covering this very large area, we don't need officers like that at all, we don't need, we don't need guys that don't understand how to do their jobs. I get, and I'm gonna put the camera on you, John, because I think you're listening to me. Okay, and I appreciate that, actually, okay. I get often accused of coming to, honest to God, coming to, honest to God, you guys, I wanted to ask Kevin a question before he left, which I did, but you guys offer the public an opportunity to ask questions after, during pretty much every vote, which is great, honest to God, you know? I mean, that, I think, it's kind of a bummer that there's nobody here today, but, you know, it allows anybody that, you know, to get it right then and right there, and to clarify anything, you know? I know how frustrating it is when you go to a meeting and you have a question, and you wanna ask it, you know, so thanks, and I guess I'll see you guys next month.
Well, they can always look at your recording, John, they're not here.
Well, yeah, that's another thing too, is I want, you know, thanks for bringing that up too, you know, you guys aren't really sticklers about the time speaking, number one and number two. Livestreams of these are great, you know, I've been recommending to every municipality, it would give me something else to do in the evenings, because I wouldn't have to come to them, I could just watch them, but they're simple, it's very simple to do, and you could probably get a better camera than my phone. But yeah, thanks, you know, that's basically why I come to, you know, I was asked by one of your residents to come to a meeting, and I just like coming, you know, like I said, because it's a pleasure coming, you know, so far, so. Thank you, actually let me talk too.
Okay, moving along here, next thing we got is a motion to accept the minutes from our regular October meeting. First, second by Christie, call of favor. And we also have a, yeah, I want to get a motion to accept the October special meeting, that was a meeting where we accepted the bid for the park. Second by John, call of favor. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Treasury Report, Jesse?
I gave bank balances and the general fund ledger, along with the budget to actual, two items that are not on the general fund list, they weren't inputted yet. One is a bill from Spence Cooster from July to present, a little over five thousand.
That's not all there.
Is it on there?
Yes.
Sorry, I thought maybe I didn't have it all.
Five thousand twenty-five dollars.
Okay, and then the garbage bills just came today, so they aren't on there.
After being voted by.
We did the third quarter filing for taxes, and then the fourth quarter will be done by Kendall. That's really all I have.
So what was that about Kendall? Have we, are we square with Kendall at this point? No?
No, that's not what I said.
We're two audits, yeah.
Yeah, I just said that the third quarter taxes haven't... Yeah. I just said that the, the third quarter taxes haven't filed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But the fourth quarter is done and then our W twos and stuff, um, so that'll, that'll be.
A little thing I know Jesse was going to hit on that, but we finally, I don't know, whenever we first took over, we were five years behind in our audits. As of right now, we are caught up.
Yeah, a hundred percent caught up on that.
Will make things a lot easier moving forward.
Yeah, good for grants and everything, so. That's all I have. If anyone has questions.
The only other thing is I mentioned to Jesse, uh, I don't know how many people see, we've had the crack. Sealed all the cracks. We put, uh, that's a pretty nice machine, I guess. Takes few, few people to operate, but, um, you have air on it, has everything to blow the cracks out, seal the cracks. So, it was a little expensive. Uh, we won't use it again for a few years, I don't think, because it's twenty-nine hundred bucks. Uh, but it's, it doesn't, it does a really frickin' nice job. The material that they give you is rubberized as opposed to the liquid stuff, so it should last a few years. So, and we're taking that invoice and the invoice from the two speed signs we got, Jesse will file with, uh, the county to get our, we'll have those two invoices. So, basically, we got those for, not, not the money we got, but we'll get them counted and we'll cover those two things.
Uh, another thing on there I forgot to mention is, uh, we gave Milky's the first third of their financial. Um, so that is on page three in the middle of the page.
I was going to ask you about that, that the balance in the checking account is, what is it, one ninety?
One ninety-six.
Does that include the deduction of the twenty thousand?
No, so, well, I don't know if they cashed it yet. That would have been after I reconciled.
Which will get reimbursed from, by the state, obviously, but I was just wondering if that balance reflects that.
I don't know. All I did was look at the balances today, to be honest. I didn't look inside.
For everybody's information on that, Toby looked that over. You think that what we have to do is we, we're going to have to carry that whole balance? And then move forward, we'll go back to the state and give them the invoices and they will reimburse us.
Yeah, they're, it's reimbursing. But it has to be done at once, not progressively.
I don't think there was progress payment language, but it's going to depend on when Milky's gets us their invoices too.
I think that's what you know the one was.
They're not going to, the state's not going to reimburse us for the first payment because Milky's hasn't. The materials invoiced us from the borough, things like that. Those are what we have to submit the same.
The first payment basically just seals the contract.
Is he getting any work done, you think?
He's hoping, hoping to get some, I mean, he won't plan anything for sure. Hopefully, hopefully we'll get some wallwork done. I was actually trying, it isn't part of the bid. I asked him to try and pick me up a flagpole. I'd like to get a flagpole, I'm sorry, put some Christmas lights on, but I haven't written any back on them yet. As to whether, because we have to get that pretty quickly, but, uh, it wasn't part of the bid, it was something that we would do, the borough would do on our own or, you know, so. Okay, so, that's where I was asking. Okay, anybody got any questions on Treasury report? Okay, Mike, did I get a motion to accept the Treasury report? John, second. Uh, roll call, Jess, please.
Rick Gremish?
Yes.
John Baylow?
Yes.
Brian Porthadson? Bruce Shannon?
Yes.
Christie Dicker?
Yes.
Michael Guyer?
Yes.
Jessica Young?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, next we got a motion to advertise a solicitation ordinance. I guess we should actually call it the stop solicitation ordinance.
Yeah, so we, uh, I passed those out last month. Um, everybody kind of said they wanted a little time to digest it, make some suggestions this month if necessary or, or not, um, for the guys.
So, what's everybody's thoughts on moving forward with that?
I, I think it's a good idea myself, but I can only speak for myself. I think we need to have a better control and handle on people to come into the community and want to sell things.
I do have, um, so I, there were supposed to be people in the borough. I had let you guys know. They sent me every one of their driver's licenses, so that if somebody said this person would, you know.
Now, did you ask them to do that or like why did we suddenly get that?
They called on Tuesday.
Without even knowing that we did.
They asked if we had a solicitation and I said, well, I'd like to know who and I just gave it, so. It might be because maybe somewhere around us like already does that and they already had it.
Pretty much the same way. I mean, they have to get a solicitation permit and during that permit, uh, process, they identify the people who will be on the street. So, if we do come and contact them, which happens quite often, um, we are aware that they were under that permit. So, it kind of protects the residents in, in the municipality from.
Do we have, we have an obligation to post that on those en- entrances to the borough?
I'm not sure. I can't answer that, but.
Post what?
The, the solicitation permit required.
I think typically people will do that just to get notice, but you know obligation, but I know of.
Yeah, I know you guys had mentioned a couple of things. I asked them to, to make sure that they had something identifiable on them, a lanyard or a vest. And she said they wear clothes that say what they are and so, I just used what we have all discussed and she pretty much gave it.
Your Facebook page is a pretty good thing too. I mean, everybody seems to get everything off Facebook today. So, if it's not required to be posted, that's maybe a stuff you could get too.
Okay, still looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion that we advertise this solicitation ordinance.
Second, Mike. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Girl Scouts too, selling cookies?
There, there are exemptions. I can send you a copy if you want, Sean.
Please do, thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, next we got, uh, Borough Light up, Mike. Uh, in the past, it's always been, we go after the city. The city's this Friday night to twenty-first. We don't have it Saturday night because church is at six o'clock and we cut down on the attendance. So, we usually have Sunday to twenty-third, so if that's okay with everybody.
At six?
At, at six o'clock. Yeah, I have the sun prepared. I'll set the W R signs out that we have to get ready. Just put it on Facebook, yeah, we'll be, we'll have Santa Claus again. There will be, uh, gifts for all the kids who come to sit on Santa's lap. There'll be some new lights in here. We got some new stuff going on, going up, so. Good time should be had by all, hopefully.
Where's that?
Here.
Right, right here.
Here at the borough building?
Yeah.
We light up our tree and.
Yeah, we put, put a Christmas tree up. We have a thing that goes across the intersection. We do up the building a little bit with some stuff.
And the room next to you is where Santa is.
That was, thanks, November.
Eleven twenty-three at six P M.
Try to make it.
Six o'clock.
I can add a motion.
Can I get a motion out back? Okay, Josh, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this next, uh, this is the one, we, we, we haven't been denied yet. Motion to resubmit the end of year's after this, resubmit the LSA grant for sidewalks. They haven't really denied our first one because of all the budget mess in Harrisburg. So, they haven't really met to say we didn't get the first time or, but the end of year's team to think that we should resubmit it, so.
It doesn't cost us anything to do that.
I guess it does.
Yes, it does. But, but here's the deal, okay? They're supposed to meet, what'd she, he say, Thursday? Or this Thursday or next Thursday? Matt said. Now that the budget has been passed, or I guess is in the process of being passed, uh, D C E D will meet, they'll decide on the first round of the LSA grants, which we submitted, okay? And I think it's either this Thursday or next Thursday. If we go ahead and resubmit now, Matt Stare over at Keller Engineering will hold off on resubmitting that until a decision is made on the first round.
So, we get our money back?
So, well, we won't pay him until he resubmits.
So, I mean, if he, if he get the first one, he won't.
He won't submit it.
Okay.
So, there'll be no need.
The resubmission is in the wings.
The way he explained it to me was that if we don't submit, and the, the due date on this is the twenty-eighth of November, so we're, we're kind of up against it. If we don't submit or resubmit on the twenty-eighth, assuming that we're not going to get approved on the first round, then we would have to wait until the twenty-eighth of November next year to submit, which means we wouldn't get the money until twenty-twenty-seven. You know, so i- it's kind of an insurance policy.
And how much is it to resubmit?
Eight hundred dollars to submit, another four hundred dollars if it's approved.
And there's a hundred dollar application fee. We're normally, he charges twelve hundred.
Right, yeah.
So, if we're eight hundred into this already with the first submission, uh, we don't have to pay him the second eight hundred for the resubmission until a decision is made in Harrisburg on the first round, so. That's where we're at.
We have to do it now or we're going to miss out for a year, is the long line.
Did they have any like feedback? Like, did they think we have a chance? Did they think?
Well, no, there's, there's, there's no feedback on it all, but the way Matt explained it to me is if you resubmit, it sends a message to the people that are deciding in Harrisburg that the community, being Brownstown, really feels this is a priority. And, and that's why we're, we're being insistent on resubmitting it.
Now, the other thing is they will not know that we resubmit until they deny us the first time, will they? Because if they, if they already know we resubmitted, then it sort of maybe gives them an idea, well, they're already resubmitting. We don't have to give them the first time. We can give it to them the next time or whatever. We give it to somebody else because these people have already resubmitted.
Was that your understanding, Bruce, or no?
I'm not sure if I understood what you just said.
Well, if, what I'm saying is, will they, whenever, wherever D C E D, whoever's giving this grant, LSA, I guess it is, needs to give this grant out, will they already know that we, we submitted for the next round?
No.
No, they're not going to submit it to the next round until the decision is made by them first. And then Matt will go ahead and resubmit. I guess we have to pass a ru- resolution, or he said this.
There'll be a resolution.
Yeah.
That this motion will authorize you guys to execute that one again.
It, it just basically ensures us the opportunity to resend within the timeframe if we get denied on the first cut. That's all. So, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to make that motion.
Motion on the floor, like a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Christie. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I do have one question on that, Toby, which is a solicitor question. This grant, if approved, basically redoes side, does sidewalks and curbing on Havik Street. Havik, uh, between Crystal and Gilbert.
Okay.
Okay. Sidewalks are owned by the resident. They're not owned by the borough. What if a resident comes up to us and says, I don't want my sidewalk redone?
That's an interesting question. I haven't really thought about. Guess we'll cross that bridge if we come through, huh?
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I just thought of this tonight. I mean, I would think that everybody would be more than happy to have their sidewalks redone, but you never know.
I've been waiting nine years.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
If it comes to it, we get the grant. Somebody objects back, you know, if that issue that.
Okay, move on to the next, uh, I want to thank these guys who worked on the budget, put the twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six budget together, uh.
Do you want to get through this or?
Yeah, well, it, it, well, if, if, if you want to item by item, I mean, it's, it's, it's more compartmentalized than it's been in the past, so it's a little easier to look at.
More streamlined. It's general categories. Basically, the bottom line is we bring in two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. That's what we estimate we'll bring in. And we estimate we'll pay out two hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And, you know, if there's one thing I would hope the audience tonight would take away with, and if you don't listen to anything else that's being said here tonight, understand the fact that the amount of money we bring into this community to make it work is very, very small compared to other communities around us. But you know something? Somehow, some way, we, we find a way to make it work. And, um, uh, you can go through the individual categories if you want, uh, or do you want me to go through them, Rick? Or, I mean, what do you want me to do here?
No, I mean, you can go. You can go down through them. If anybody has any questions, I guess, the, Brian's not going to be testing.
If, if you want to, if you want to know in more detail, each of these general categories reflects, refer to the monthly budget and the actual report that Jesse sends out to us, and you'll see the more itemized version of that in terms of what's included within these general categories. Like, for instance, um, uh, you know, real estate taxes, you know, well, there's something called current real estate tax. There's delinquent real estate tax, you know, same thing with, you know, uh, E I T, earned income tax and things of that nature. So, but this two hundred and eighty-two thousand includes everything. It includes money we get for garbage. It includes money we get from the cable company, liquid fuels, county aid, I mean, it's just not a lot of money.
And the reason, the reason it was streamlined is that our auditor suggested we could streamline it. He said we do way too much. It was way too complicated and way too, uh, too much intensive detail than we really had to do in the past. So, this is, they're suggesting to streamline a little more.
Does anybody have any questions on the budget? Mike, anything?
Not really. I mean, it seems, you did, you really laid it out really well.
I, I.
I think you did a great job.
What I did was I did a, a comparison, and I can email this to everybody. I, I went through the old budget, the end of year budget to actual reports for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, and I put them in a, on a spreadsheet. So, I mean, you can look at that. Uh, our, like, for instance, our, our real estate income has actually, uh, trended up a little bit. And so has our E I T. Not a lot, but a little bit. So, I mean, you can, a- and, and we looked at that when we decided what we, we didn't have a full year for twenty-five, obviously, but we looked at that to try and project what we think we'll, will bring in and spend in twenty-six, so.
I do have one question, like, like your street lighting. Why would that go down in twenty-twenty-six?
You know, we budgeted ten thousand dollars for street lighting in twenty-five, uh, and I looked at the, we've only spent like about, I think about sixty-eight or seventy, seven thousand on streetlight. When we went, your, your, your big issue there, LEDs. Uh, we actually saved money on the LEDs, so.
And we also get some sort of discount every year.
Okay, yeah, as a partner.
What is it, Bruce, just for having all of ours switched over?
Yeah, and the other thing too is that the roof loan will expire in, uh, August. So, the eighty-eight hundred dollars a year we spent on the roof loan, we, we only pay until August, so it's like sixty.
Six thousand dollars.
Six thousand dollars, something like that, so.
And we will be completely debt-free from everything.
We will be debt-free, which is a real, you know, audits are caught up, no debt. It's a, it's a great day in the neighborhood.
No, one, one other question. We're talking like, like I'm looking on here and I see vehicles equipped with repair. Like, is there anything we should look for in the future for, or is there anything?
The pickup's starting to nickel and dime us.
Yep.
Okay, so, so that's the next thing we look for whenever there's a grant out there. We should look for, all we need is a cab and chassis, because we can put that bed on it. So, that should keep the price of it down for the grant, but we should, I, I completely agree. That's something we should definitely look. Next time the grants are out there, whichever it might be, we should look for another thing.
So, with the budget being what we have coming in, what we have going out, there really isn't any money left over for capital improvements at all, none, zero. And, um, we rely on grants to make things work. We just, we, we just have to have grants to make things work. The other thing too in here is that since John's here, uh, the police budget actually goes down with the inclusion of Upper Yoder, the police budget, uh, obligation for Brownstown and all the other municipalities. At least for Brownstown, it goes down about two thousand dollars, but the fire service fee has gone up about a thousand dollars from twenty-five into twenty-six. Goes from, well, it's just up to about ten thousand, three hundred and something is what.
Yeah.
If you actually look at the police, it's, it's two thousand, but it would have been more, because it would have went up going into next year.
So, we only claim the about a thousand dollar benefit for that, so. If anybody has, doesn't have any questions, I'll make a motion that we accept the twenty-twenty-six budget to advertise. Uh, advertise, excuse me. I beg your pardon.
That's okay.
And there is some Christmas dec-. And there is some Christmas decorations. There'll be some more up, because these are adults. I'm sure they can work on Christmas decorations without everything, so.
And I'll be here because they'll be in here.
Yeah, I'll be, I, I, I plan on showing up too.
What time is? Five, that, next Thursday, on the twentieth.
Okay, so, anybody has any problem with that annotated motion, it will allow them to, either both of them, on point. Can I get a motion to that back?
I like that one.
Christie, second. Mike, call in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Can I, Rick, digress one moment on the budget?
Sure, you can, Rick.
I failed to mention that, um, in, in the budget, we, we, uh, we, uh, projected a, uh, and of course, this is a decision that has yet to be made, uh, in terms of salary increase for, uh, Jim. But for some reason, we did not reflect in the budget a potential salary increase for our secretary. So, um, I don't know.
We did do that.
Did we do that?
It's a, um, maybe general gov.
It's in, maybe General Gov, I have it written down.
Okay, all right, so we're good then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, my mistake, I beg your pardon.
But you did bring a good point up, sorry. For a new business, one of the things I want to discuss is part-time winter help, right? Potential part-time help. Should we, would we want to include that into your budget? Is that something we should consider, or is that put in the cart before the horse?
Well, I think if, if approved, part-time, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Right, we have.
We can get there, so. Okay.
Yeah, so I just wanted, and, and again, that, that's a council decision, we, we budgeted, but if, if council decides they don't want to move forward with that, then, you know, so be it.
Next, we have a motion to advertise the tax ordinance, which actually includes taxes, garbage, well, so.
Everything required, the, the fire protection fee, garbage, mechanical and amusement device fee, wastewater fee. We, we adopt this every year, it sets forth the taxes and allows the municipality to be a taxing authority. I'll work with Jesse to get the new numbers in, the new budget numbers. The fire fee, I don't know if we discussed.
No, I think they decided up in state, everything should stay the same, right?
I think we decided the same for garbage.
Yeah, they did, I wish, I think that's a mistake, but that's, we'll see how that works out.
So really, other than dates changing them from two thousand twenty-five to twenty-six, putting the new budget in, it's the same one you've enacted every year for the past few years since I've been solicitor, so. Any questions?
Yeah, no questions, motion to advertise the tax ordinance. John, second?
I'll second that.
Bruce, let's do a whole on it, just.
Rick Grammish?
Yes.
John Baylock?
Yes.
Brian Floraflatsen, Bruce Shannon?
Yes.
Kirsty Dicker S., Michael Byer?
Yes.
Jess Young?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, one percent. Takes care of the regular motions, we're going to run down, we're going to run down through some other stuff here, new business, part-time winter help. What do you guys know on that?
That's my main, I think we should at least be open.
Oh, I'm, I'm open, John, I just.
I would know the approach.
Yeah, well, you need to find somebody, the part-time help we had in the past, they would trash the frickin' vehicle, park it in the garage and leave it, and when a full-time guy come back, you have a broken-down, burnt-up vehicle and no way to plow. So we have, we need, I, I, I'd love to take a little bit of the pressure off him, it would be great if we could take a little bit, but we need to find the right person.
Right, okay.
So we all need to be on the lookout for one.
Right, is it something you want to advertise, or is it probably working out, like?
Do you think there's someone Jim knows, like, he would, he's going to get, know someone?
Do you have to have a commercial driver's license to plow?
No, we're below the weight limit, brake restrictions, it's not very, so.
So you could technically have a high school student plow, correct?
Sure, technically, I don't know.
One term, technically, you want to do that.
Have you ever seen Liam do the zero turn? He's good at it.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out, I mean, in terms of identifying the pool, potential.
I think you want to stick with the municipality hiring people over the age of eighteen.
They do, okay. Is, is that, is that in all cases, Toby, or just?
Grab a microphone.
I have had a few people in the past approach me, like, Tanya Mitchell, she said her boys used to plow for Pindot, one of them. Could we put it on our Facebook page that you would want, we would entertain somebody?
Yeah, if someone would be interested, yeah, that we could, I mean, it, it, it isn't, it wouldn't be a scheduled event, it would be an on-call event, like, you know, we're, we're scheduling, it would be as needed.
Do you have residency requirements? Do you have residency requirements?
No.
They have to be able to be here at a reasonable amount of time, you know?
Of course, we only have two plows, one would be on the dump and one would be on the pickup, so.
Right.
You know, the, the dump could be a little tricky.
Yeah, I just didn't see it was difficult.
I actually found a dump you used to plow with.
Really?
Yeah.
You work there, John?
No.
I, I think it's a good idea, I just think we need to be on the top, maybe we can put it on Facebook.
I mean.
You want, what do you want, applications, they were accepting applications? Or, they're accepting interested?
Yeah, yeah, we would just.
If you're interested. I just don't want Facebook messages, like, you know what I mean, I, should we say that we should? Winner of interest or your resume or something?
Yeah.
Well, we, I tell you, a re- resume showing that they have a plowing background. We're not going to teach anybody how to plow, we'll beat it, we'll put it in the process, so.
Fair.
Okay. Fire service fee, I think we decided we're keeping that the same, any other discussion on that?
Yes, so thirty-three dollars?
Yes. Garbage fee is going to be kept the same, even though there is an automatic escalator clause in our contract for a couple percent.
Does that take effect?
Oh, it takes effect every year, but the budget people looked it over and saw what we collected yet last year, which should be more than enough to, we, we seem to think that their numbers and our numbers are the law, they're, we think that they might be undercharging us a little bit, but they actually have a computer in their truck, in his truck house they go buy, so I don't really think they're undercharging us for work. Budget committee feels that we're, you know, that we collected enough last year that we wouldn't have to raid garbage this year, so we'll see how that goes. Coming out of discussion on garbage fees, newsletter, yes, I seen your original thing, you, I loved it, original thing, what happened?
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah, I just wondered if anyone had any additions. I have some, Jesse, I forgot. Okay, that's fine. I'll email you. You can shoot me an email, yeah. Oh, I did have, if we're going to have, like, community cleanup days at the level, can we pick days in advance? Even if you guys can't be there? Sure. You can have someone up there with the key? Yep. That we know and can say.
Well, I don't think it needs to be, we can talk about it, I mean, we're, we're not, it's already in the, in the ordinance.
I was thinking.
The citation, sort of, you know, quality of life.
Executive session.
It doesn't need to be.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so we'll hit this, go down the first, anybody got anything else on the newsletter? Budget prep, I think we sort of beat that to death already. West Hill Conferencing Plan, gentleman did a nice job, Bruce, I, I will be here for sure, I don't know if any other folks can make it, so I'll be here.
Drive over here. Wait, I don't know if you would.
Okay. Jesse put together a ticket, it's not on, it's not on here, any place, about the quality of life, basically, what it would do, it's in everybody's package. We look at what the citation would look like.
It actually would just be like this, but it's really on the same.
Yeah.
Exact same thing on, like, you would just be given one.
And I heard one question that was on, was asked, would, do you think the ordinance, each ordinance should be stated on the citation?
Like, on the violation observed, should it say?
It, it could, if you want to say which ordinance, or leave a blank for it, so you can tell them, this is the ordinance that you're violating on, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, my biggest question is, Toby, see anything wrong with?
Uh, well, I haven't looked at it, but I can check it out, for sure.
Okay, well, quick look, if, if you see anything, I mean, let us know, we can, we can change it, so.
I saw one thing at the top that I need to change already.
Yeah.
It was someone else's.
We must name the ordinance that we can talk with, it would be helpful.
Okay, nothing on that, on that, well, let's see, fire service fee twenty twenty-five, old business, how's the collection going on that, yes? You have, you have something, Mike, sorry, did I push forward?
One question, and it just kind of came to mind, since we have a representative here, and I know we have had questions in the past, like the new garbage ordinance and stuff, but when we come up with our new ordinances, right, can we send a copy of this to Judy at West Hills? They have it on the office, that an officer can refer back to it?
I think we send it to them if they're enforcing it, right?
But how can they enforce it if they don't know?
Well.
Yeah, no, I don't send it to Judy, um, it would be me talking to Officer Kesslack and saying, hey, here's what I think they're violating, and then, it, it's like kind of case by case, I don't just send it to Judy.
Chris is out right now, so, just so we don't miss a vote if that does happen.
Yeah, if you need something, John, you, you know, tell me if you see something, we should be doing it or not, that is not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, certainly could send them to Judy, for sure.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I'm like, how would they know?
Pass it out, sure. Jesse, this says we accept cash, that was the other. Oh, yeah, yeah. Where is that at, sorry? Like, right after last night. Okay, thank you. We do not accept cash.
Please do not accept cash.
Check the money order. Yep, thank you.
Okay. How's your collection going on the twenty twenty-five fire service fee?
Last meeting, or the, on the eighth, we decided that this meeting, I'd give Toby the list of people who had not paid for my last letter. Um, so I'll give him that, that list, it's nineteen people that have not paid.
It's a little less than last year, right?
Yes, but some of the same people.
Okay. Same, same people you haven't learned.
So, no, no. So, do you guys want me to write one final letter to them?
Whenever your process would last.
Okay, one final letter, and then we'll discuss dental litigation.
Kind of do like the class action thing again?
Okay. Laura, we need to swap that O C two.
Yep, that's all, I, I haven't been sending them things, because I'd like to start using this, especially over by that corner now. It has a washer and a.
So there's, there's a thing on for.
Table and, and, no one else.
Right.
Um, so if you guys read the status of Phil's, it's kind of what I told you last time, he's deciding to kind of go a different way. Um, and then for the ID Lounge, they have court scheduled.
Yeah, I turned that to a thirty-day extension, so that was probably thirty days from the last one. We'll see, if she's, if she comes back, maybe I can have another conference, she's, she seemed out of it, they had money in his, they were going to rebuild that, and they were going to, they were going to open a convenience store there, so I wish you all luck in the world.
Are you guys okay with not filing charges on Phil because he changed his, and he can't really do work right now, or what do you want to do there?
I keep my nose out of that, because that's family.
Because of the weather, you mean, the winter?
Yep.
Isn't that something that the magistrate would chime in on?
It's us saying we want her to file charges, that's why they leave that little box there, so. Can we have a follow-up, like, next month, to say whether or not the storage box? Sure. Is there? If, if it's, like, secured for the winter, then maybe we give them the winter, but if there isn't progress towards securing it for winter, I think we have an issue. Okay. That's just my opinion, Chris. I agree with you.
I have a question, too, like, the, the old ID Lounge, like, the box trucks sitting there, like, what was their plan?
That's part of, that's part of the continuums, I think, the chief was there, you weren't at that hearing, where he's gone.
I was not, no, but we.
I think, I think, I think that was part of the continuums.
Okay.
Because they got a thirty-month continuums on the whole thing, I think. Because they were, they had her about the building and about the vehicle, and those are, are.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Yeah, Zangai, Zangai gave them thirty days, too, which is just a few days away, and the vehicle's still sitting there, so I don't know, we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Okay, uh, this will, audit update, it is completed, just sent to you before, we assigned him, sent him to D C E D, so that is done. Uh, Rose, do you have an update for us in executive section?
Executive section, yep.
Uh, storm drains, since the winter breaks, we'll check our finances, but I would like to get especially some stuff here before they do the roads, get some things fixed before, yeah, stopping them and tears them up, we got a couple that are collapsing, and I'd like to get fixed, for sure. And then we'll call the gentleman that you talked about, probably, because why, if we take their gym, they're afraid of it, it's stuck right on top of the waterline.
They, he did an amazing job, like, when we were doing the sewer projects, he came in and rebuilt a ton of those bosses, he did great. But, my mind's getting here, the gas company, you know, where they intend on paving and fixing.
The only thing that they are guaranteed means they will get done is Hobbie Street. They said they would not give Shaker, they would not give.
Gilbert.
So are.
Not Carlos.
They would not, they would not give Canard.
So our box trucks are going to be up.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, look, look, where you're digging, you know, we ain't going to be the only ones, like I said.
No, I just don't think it's right.
Yeah.
I don't think it's right at all.
I talked, I talked to Jim, and I don't know, we might take and put our big brush back on and try and clean up Canard, push everything up, up the gravel up as we can, just because we did the parking lot up at the park, you know?
Like, I think they're, they're patching themselves.
Well, some of their, some, well, some, some of their patching is not even, doesn't even have coal patch, right, some of it is just for the stumby.
Well, is there anything we have within the clause or contract we can refer back to and say that it's not too satisfactory?
Well, the, the plant will be closed, I'll be honest, I, I, I thought, I have a conversation tomorrow with my water authority, and they're starting next week on Troy Street, just a thousand feet, that, that the general manager said that he thought they could get the hot patch in before the winter breaks, and I, I just can't see that happen.
My, my concern is, so, let's just say you have a five-foot wide trench, but it's not even properly patched now. So what's going to be their plan in the spring when that five-foot patch, you're going to lose a foot and a half of the road on each side from it degrading, fucking cracking, are they going to fix all that, or are they going to?
They do have our roadway restoration, or, like, they asked for it before they started, they do.
Well, they're going to pave, or, if, if it's busted up, I mean, all we can do is stand there and say, hey, you're going to have to go more, because their, their, their standard is to go whenever, at least whenever Lindy comes in, they go one foot on each side of their ditch, and they go wider than that, you know, for six inches, and then they put it back.
Yeah, I'm just.
And, and Lindy, Lindy does all the, the patching for the gas company, so.
Right.
As a little warning, I think that the water company will be starting on Gilbert Street in the spring. I mean, I, 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 I know it's a little painful to ask, but, I mean, if, if we, if we get it all done over a certain period of years, and then you have all new infrastructure in your ground, it's less problems down the road. We have problems, all we can do is call them and say, hey, this particular road is so rough, we have bent our, uh, cutting ends on our plow, what are you going to do about it?
Yeah, like, I just look at it like safety, too, right, like, you don't want to have a road trip, a tire trip, like, for residents, ice, snow, kind of, and.
I mean, the road, the road will be so rough, they won't be able to go very fast, that's, that's a plus.
Yes, that's a, that's all right.
Like a speed bump.
We, we, we won't need her, I think the grill might have got a little ticked, Jim and I, because we told them that we didn't see putting up the blinkies, I said, coming into winter, guys, I said, plus, with the work, we're worried about that damage, and if we put those signs up out there, that we, they, they would get damaged with all the construction and everything anyhow, so we were going to wait until spring to put them up. But we did put all four slow signs up, I don't know if you guys seen there, but all never put up, so.
I have one in mind, real quick, I mean, John, under the police report, and I don't mean to ambush you on this, but, um, the question I have is, when police officers issue traffic citations in, in the department, are they mostly the result of an officer being stationary, or is it the result of an officer being mobile at the time? And the reason I ask is because I've brought it up to the chief in the past. I'm a little concerned that only two percent of the traffic violations in the entire department are, relate to Brownstown. And yet I see people running stop signs in this borough, all over the place. So, that, that's my question, I mean, if you sat up by the church parking lot, you could see people running a stop sign all day long. So, that's my question, are most of the citations, when an officer is stationary, monitoring a, an intersection, or is it, you know, like, somebody speeding or failure to use a turn signal or whatever?
Are we generally speaking in, in other municipalities, or just here specifically?
Just in West Hills.
So, I can tell you, it's very difficult sometimes sitting stationary and getting stop sign violations. You may get one, and then from there on, as soon as you're sitting there, you're getting flashed, which, yeah, I mean, it happens. The chances of you getting a move in probably are greater than setting, and here, I can tell you personally, from setting in areas here, there's limited areas to set.
I know that.
And they know that, so the minute that they know that they see the first one getting pulled over by whoever it may be, that's like, you know, broadcast route.
Well, you have a main thoroughfare going from Westmont down to Cambria City, and there's a lot of traffic that goes through that area, and, and I, I know that in certain places, there's a lot of running stops. So, you know, I just throw that out there, I've mentioned it to the chief in the past, I think two percent is kind of low, I would like to, look, nobody, nobody wants speed traps or anything like that, I'm not, I'm not proposing it, I'm just saying, you know, anything to promote safety in the borough is what we're looking for.
And I agree with you, I, I just, like you said, it is very difficult here, and I think the numbers you're seeing as well, is we just discussed the, well, you guys just discussed the roadwork down here. You know, some of the streets have been closed, which has kind of pushed some of the traffic in a different direction from coming down through. So that may be indicative of the numbers, at least initially. I'm not using that as an excuse, nor whatever, but I'm just saying that may be something that, that's going on there.
I think the department's doing a great job, they're getting it wrong.
We're three and a half, we're setting the budget, we should at least get three and a half.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, 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 I mean, I, on a whole, I think it needs to be picked up, but, yeah, I, I would agree with you.
Well, I, I, I don't want that as an indictment against the police, I think the police department does a fantastic job.
We appreciate it, yes.
Traffic, I think, is a little, that's all.
Okay, anybody got anything else before we go into the executive section? We got some litigation to talk about.
Just real bad, I won't take the time, but, I, I'm not sure, does Brownstown have a, have an annual road resurfacing or paving program? Is that something, that, that, okay.
Was that a joke?
No. No, 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 no.
Toby, one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
No, I, I, that's what, um, I just wanted to bring, bring your attention outside of the plane, but the, the Cambria County Planning Commission has worked with the county commissioners to, to put out, uh, it's called the Municipal Infrastructure Assistance Program. It's really designed to be municipalities like yours where budget budget's too tight. It's for roads, bridges, and really stormwater projects that, that affect roads. What the program does is fifty percent of, of, of the funds that the county receives, the county liquid fuel funds, they get. About three hundred, half of that, which would be about three hundred and fifty thousand, they make available, uh, for municipalities.
Mark, we, what we did, we put together a, the other half, that's fourth part of our executive section, we put together a plan where we did almost a half million dollars worth of paving, where we got the gas company, the water company, we got a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the state, and we put money into it. And we did close to a half a million dollars worth of paving on the other side. So we're, we're, we're doing our best, and that's why we're trying to work with gas and water companies both now to get as much. When this is all done, these roads will be in the best shape they've been in in thirty years.
The, the intent of the pro, quite honestly, is to, to bring, the, the commissioner of counties providing fifty thousand to municipalities, it's a simple application, there's really no.
Yeah.
Now, now, when I say there's no truck, I mean, there's no match to that. I mean, re- really, it's the, if you, if you were.
Well, we have, we have, we have a, we have a couple areas that we're not gonna be able to get reviews of the utilities paid, so we may could just put that money there.
If it's all right, I'll, I'll follow up with your, especially, I, I just want to make your aware of it. The fir- the first time it came out was last, last fall, so maybe, you know, maybe not time, but the, the next round is probably, probably gonna open it up beginning of the year. So I just want to make your aware of that.
Thank you.
The other thing to keep in mind on that is when we have about three and a half miles of.
Yeah.
Road, and there's no state roads in the borough, so our liquid fuels is very low.
Right, well, this, this would be not, this would be over in the bottom half.
We are, we are the only municipality in the county that does not have a state road, we're not sure.
I'd like to, you know, directly follow up with you on that, just to save it's an opportunity.
That'd be very appreciated.
For free, you know, I, nothing's free, but, yeah. Make sure you're aware of that.
Okay, so guys, we're gonna go into executive session now, I thought it was actually, appreciate, appreciate.
We aren't voting on anything on the way out.
Okay, good, thank you, appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Enjoy your holidays.
You too. So, take care.
Be back. No special, you got nothing planned for in between, good, awesome. See you guys.
See ya.
Thanks.
Good.
Excuse me, man. Thank you, boss, appreciate that. It's nice and warm in here, I'm gonna do this here. Hopefully that's the last time I have to sit through the comprehensive plan speech. It's a good speech, but that's about the third or the fourth time I've heard it. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna end this now, thanks for watching. Uh, if you like what you see, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, leave a comment and subscribe, all right? I'm gonna, um, go home and do something fun, all right, bye.